Trick, you know.
Got my first gray hair when I was like.
Yeah, well, yeah.
Second Captain Chris.
I know what was gonna happen.
You know, the next heart track next.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, yeah, Picard, Picard, yes.
Yeah, 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 so that one.
Salt and pepper when she died at seventy. So I didn't know where I was gonna be.
Okay, well, you're gonna see the back of everyone, everyone's head as we. Anyway, so, yeah, anyway.
How I wouldn't have had a clue. And I, I think I'm more like my maternal.
I guess, yeah.
All the men in my family, gray and balding, so handwriting is on the wall.
Oh, yeah, my husband.
Well.
I didn't have a chance. My father was bald. All my uncles were bald. My grandfather was bald. So there was no chance.
Well, you know what it is, is that your, your skull doesn't, your, your, your head doesn't have room for the follicles 'cause your brain is so.
It can grow, yeah.
Max, huh, 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 how's there? Not there.
Where is that feedback coming from?
Yeah, but I think the feedback comes, I mean, because it's turned on.
Can you turn your, can you turn it off, please? Turn off your speaker, turn off your speaker, turn off.
Or maybe just, just turn down the sound. There you go.
That's me. I have to turn off my audio as soon as the feedback.
And I'm gonna look here because, um. It is gonna be the end of New Year, just 'cause you the back of your head. I'm gonna type that group here.
Well, when we get, when we get to, when we're done with musical chairs here.
Yeah, yeah.
I remember that game when I was young, you know, the, and the music and everything. I never won.
It was such anxiety in me.
Oh, yes. I'm sure you played it when you were.
Oh, yeah, did it win a cake, win a pot.
Yeah.
Oh, that's a cake walk.
And then, oh, there was the cake walk, too. No, I'm talking. This is going around and they're running.
That's why.
One, two.
And the chair. Yes.
Oh, you walked around a, a.
A circle.
And they turned the music and, and. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, and you land on a circle and occasionally you win a cake. Because of the fair when.
It was a fun.
When our generation took our cakes to the fair, we judged.
Let me know when you're ready there, Ronnie. Okay. Oh, I don't have my. Um, it's six oh two, I call the meeting of workshop meeting of the planning commission in to order. Uh, would somebody call the roll?
Uh, yeah, Commissioner Gauthier. Commissioner Gauthier.
Here.
Commissioner Blair.
She answered.
Here.
Commissioner Meyer.
Here.
Commissioner Bellows.
Here.
Commissioner Petrie.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Chair Boehner.
Yeah.
All here.
Okay. All right, um, we scheduled a workshop so that we can discuss what's going to be coming at our meeting in December that we'll have a public hearing for. And I think Max is going to be doing a report. But this is one of those kind of oddball things. It's not a, not a planning application. So are you ready to go, Max? And something is in the middle of the screen covering you up.
All right, hang on, I'm trying to pull up this, uh, presentation that I sent Ronnie earlier today.
Okay. Which is easier for Ronnie to do it or for you to do it, Max?
It'll probably be easier if I do it.
Okay.
Just give me two seconds. All right, can you guys see that?
Yeah.
Are you a host so you can share your screen?
Yeah, but now.
There we go.
Okay.
All right, so the city recently received our final approval letter from the Department of State Lands for the local wetland inventory that encompasses the rest of Kingston Terrace that was not included in the original one that was done in 2023. Um, this was funded by grants from Metro and necessitated by DLCD and Metro. So I wanted to just give the commission, you'll, you'll have to vote for a recommendation to the city council next month. And then the city council is obligated by state law to adopt the local wetland inventory, which will provide some protections for locally significant wetlands that are out in Kingston Terrace. So I made this presentation just to kind of bring everyone up to speed. I'm sorry I couldn't be there in person today. I've been feeling under the weather this week and was kind of on my last legs earlier today, so, excuse me. All right, so what is a local wetland inventory? It's a comprehensive inventory of natural resources within urban growth boundaries. And as I mentioned, it's adopted and it becomes part of the city's comprehensive plan map. So anytime a developer or the city wants to build something in the urban growth boundary, they have to analyze the space where the building is to take place versus what locally significant wetlands are mapped there. This is required by Oregon Land Use Goal Five, um, as well as, um, Oregon Advised. At. Municipal Code sixteen one nine two. Um, as I mentioned, this was approved by the Department of State Lands after about a two-year effort by the city's consultant, David Evans and Associates. Uh, as some of you may recall, there was an open house that was held in 2024. Uh, letters were sent out to property owners in the growth boundary requesting permission for land access. I know Commissioner Blair was one of the few in the urban growth boundary to allow, uh, grant access permission to our consultants, which we're very thankful for. Um, and essentially it just allows cities to enact and enforce wetland conservation plans by providing a hundred-foot buffer around locally significant wetlands, which are determined by the consultant and approved by the Department of State Lands. Uh, it's also added to the statewide wetland inventory. And so basically, when you have a locally significant wetland, it cannot be impacted within a hundred feet. Or if it is impacted, there are some pretty stringent mitigation laws that need to be followed to essentially replace the wetland from one place to another. But the city errs on the side of caution, does our best to sort of not allow too much impact in any of those wetlands. Uh, so again, just a little bit more background information. It's required by DLCD and Metro during the UGB expansion is one of the conditions of approval. Uh, it was performed in two phases. So the commission and the city council in 2023 heard the initial, uh, local wetland inventory, which was dubbed at the time Local Wetland Inventory Kingston Terrace West. And this one has the nomenclature Local Wetland Inventory Kingston Terrace East, although it does include some areas to the west that were not included in that original local wetland inventory. Um, so we'll refer to this as basically phase two, since phase one was already adopted. It was performed by the city consultant, David Evans and Associates. We sent out landowner requests for access in the spring of 2024. Fieldwork was performed in summer 2024. And there was an open house that was held by the city and Department of State Lands in autumn of 2024, um, which is also mandated by the state. So what designates a locally significant wetland? The, the inventory itself maps and delineates wetlands in general, but the locally significant wetlands are really the ones that have that special protection. So significance comes down to environmental factors, health of the wetland, contributions to surrounding wetlands, flora and fauna. So we've got the Tuolton River right there. So if the wetland is deemed to be contributing positively to the Tuolton River, it'll be known as locally significant. It doesn't meet the criteria if it's artificially created from uplands, from stormwater management, mining, logs, um, farming, things of that nature. Uh, or if it's smaller than one acre, um, and wastewater, agriculture, golf hazards, things like that don't qualify for locally significant status. Uh, it is meeting that criteria if it's a diverse wildlife habitat, fish habitat, plant communities, water quality function, if it's less than a quarter mile from a water body, uh, such as the Tuolton River, if it meets certain quality standards identified in this very rigorous assessment called the freshwater assessment methodology. And if it's inhabited by species that are sensitive, threatened, or endangered. So think of like pond turtles and herons and, and other wetland, uh, animals. Uh, so our city code sixteen one nine two, as well as statewide land use goal five and OAR one forty-one zero eight six 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 zero zero two three, essentially established the protocol and the baseline for what cities have to adhere to and what the criteria are for locally significant wetlands. Um, we had to submit this to Department of State Lands, provided maps, public notice. Ultimately, there will be a planning commission hearing next month and then a city council hearing. Uh, this also follows the PAPA receipt procedure since it's a comprehensive plan amendment. So we've had to notice, notify CD. As I mentioned, there's an adherence to a hundred-foot buffer delineation and off-wamp. I do want to note that while the locally, the, the LWI is part of the comp plan, it doesn't, the, the buck doesn't stop there. So any developer in the future or landowner will still have to perform wetland delineations to get into the finer details of where the wetlands actually are on their property. This is just kind of a broad, um, very detailed, but still broad sort of comprehensive plan map amendment. And then, uh, DLCD require, or DSL requires notice any development with a hundred-foot of wetlands, regardless of whether or not they are deemed to be locally significant. Um, wetland land use notification is a statewide requirement that the cities and developers must adhere to. So this is kind of just like the first step. Uh, so this map right here shows phase one that was already adopted in 2023 of the local, uh, the LWI. The areas in green that are hatched are wetland areas. And for the most part, those were the ones that were deemed locally significant, except for a couple, wetland KTE in the top right was deemed not to be locally significant. Wetland SFA was deemed not to be locally significant. But the ones that are closer down to the river and that flood plain south of Al's Garden Center, those were locally significant. So this, this is a really detailed map. This isn't the map that the city adopted. Ultimately, we'll have to do some code amendments to update the map in the city code. Um, but this, this is kind of just to give you an idea of how detailed the analysis is when the consultants go out there and, and start mapping things out. Um, this was the map that the city adopted. And so you can tell just by looking at it, the level of detail is significantly less because this only shows locally significant wetlands, um, that were in the study area. The study areas, the white area within Kingston Terrace that wasn't, that isn't hatched on this, uh, on this map. So there were three, four locally significant wetlands that were identified back in 2023. And this is, again, this is in the, the city code, um, as the map of reference currently. Uh, this shows phase two of the locally significant wetland map. So again, it's, you're looking at the hatch marks, uh, that are shown on the map. So we've got some on the Meyer property, on the Bankston property, on the Olmstead property, the Harold property, mostly down by the river. And we requested that the consultant combine the two maps to make it a little bit more comprehensive. So when we adopt it, we'll have a full, a full idea of everything that's significant down there. Uh, and this is the map that they came back and provided to us. So we see, uh, quite a lot of significant wetlands in the area. Again, the city didn't really have property access to most of these lands. Um, we did to some, it ended up being kind of a process because the new home company funded their own, uh, secondary study against the one that was done in 2023 so they could further move along some development. And when the city caught wind of that, we requested that their consultant, SWCA, worked with our consultant DEA to, to have some, uh, uh, more comprehensive boots-on-the-ground analysis. And they were really, uh, kind to oblige. And so the consultant for new home companies, since they are in contract for a lot of property owners out in Kingston Terrace, actually had more property access than the city did. And so they were able to get down and do some more comprehensive analysis on, on, with boots-on-the-ground down in some of these areas. So where the current, the city currently is, and our next steps is that, as I mentioned, we received a Department of State Lands approved letter on October first. Goal five requires the city to adopt any approved LWI. Uh, the LWI had to go through public comment period, um, the open house, as I mentioned. And the adoption process involves hearings, the planning commission and city council. A final ordinance will be adopted in 2026, I'm thinking probably sometime in January, um, which will include the minor code amendment, including the new map, and the comprehensive plan amendment, which just layers the LWI on top of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we've already opened up the PAPA, so DLCD has full notification that this is going on. And then Ronnie and I were talking about producing an interactive map to be published on the website. So it kind of details locations of wetlands within Kingston Terrace, both significant or otherwise. And so that's something that I'll be working on in the coming months to get running on board, um, at the, at the website level. And we already have a locally significant wetland page, but it needs to be updated. And so that's something that we'll be doing, 'cause our contract with the consultant ran out. And, yeah, does anyone have any question?
Carol here. Um, what is a riparian setback on the, um.
Tuolton River.
Um, it's generally the flood plain.
Okay.
So, pretty significant.
Here, here, flood plain.
Remember, we have, she can't give us answers here. This is just, we've got to come up with our questions.
Got it. Okay, 'cause I'm, 'cause I'm looking at.
Um. But I remember new home, um, their advertisement says, um, you know, have a, have a home on the river. And, um, and I know that that's probably not possible. And so, um, I'm looking at the wetlands and the river and trying to figure out how close you can get, actually.
Yeah.
Do we want to create, um, create our own kind of riparian, um, setback in that whole area? You know?
Part of the reason we're doing this is so that you can think about questions you want to ask in the public hearing. Having heard this and have to kind of have this in your mind and staff can be ready.
Okay, that's a question I'm gonna have.
Just ask questions.
Yeah, but please, but we have to have the answers in the public hearing.
Oh.
So you have a question that you want to ask and you can tell Max what the question is you're gonna be asking.
And you can't, you can't answer? No, Claire, stay on that, but.
Is that state law?
So Max, there's something that you had covered, I think.
Yes, you're not a hearing.
Criteria of some sort. Uh, I think when you were talking about, um, what qualifies something for, uh, a wetland? Did you mention one acre?
A locally significant wetland, yeah, I believe.
Has, has to be an acre or, or more in order to be considered?
Yeah, it can't be less than one acre.
Okay.
Um, so I'll, I'll be asking the question, it's just getting a verification. Um, as, as you noted, there were only four locks that gave us boots on the ground. Uh, so most of our work, the DEA work, uh, is, you know, photos, aerial photography from the, from, from the streets that's visible, um.
LIDAR?
Pardon?
Can we use, is LIDAR, um?
Yeah, LIDAR.
LIDAR will do it, yeah, okay.
Um, so, and as you said, if someone comes in with an application, they have to have a real, on-the-ground assessment of what's in. If someone comes in, so this is my verification. If someone comes in with an application and a piece of property that shows no wetlands on it, do they need to have someone take a look to make sure that there really are no wetlands on there? As part of, part of our approval process?
Chair, do you want me to answer?
I'll be asked that question.
Okay, yeah.
That's a, that's him as, as a staff person, he, you can, you're talking about one of the earlier developments. Let's use the one that's off one hundred thirty-seventh. I think that's a good example. He can ask about, tell you about that.
Even a hundred thirty-seventh needed to have a wetland delineation is part of the, uh, supplemental criteria that the city, and also Clean Water Services requires that you have wetland with delineations, which again.
Just very, very fine, you know.
So every applicant would have to bring in.
Right.
Someone to do that assessment, yep.
Yeah, even if it, even if your assessment says there's no wetlands, you still have to have an approval letter from DSL that says there's no wetlands there.
Exact, exactly my point, so thank you.
It's like an odd process when DLCD requires approval. Yeah, we have to hold areas, right? Doesn't seem strange.
Yeah.
Because we, we have to, we have to approve it.
This is our state government in action.
Yeah, so let's just put it in the record.
Think of it that way, is that they present us with it, we have to put it in our record that we have accepted that. It's a paper counting trail.
Public input.
Um, what is it, see, this is, we've come up with a whole bunch of questions that we will ask during the hearing, which, when we're not trying to learn everything from scratch, we've heard most of this in the show.
So Max, I look at the, um, map and it doesn't look like we have a lot of wetlands. And I know that we have created some wetlands. We've created the wetlands behind Deer Creek. We've created the wetlands down, um, near the park. What, and part of the problem that we've been looking at is the increase in, in permeable pavement, um, that started on the hills and, um, and we still are dealing with hills.
And water runs downhill.
And water runs downhill. So, um, so I'm trying to, trying to figure, I want to, will these wetlands do the job? Or will some of the insignificant wetlands, um, become significant over time, I guess?
Clean Water Services kind of mandate all this and regulate all the stormwater and wetland?
Yeah, Clean Water Services.
Yes.
More or less.
One of the things that we'll be, end up putting on our plate is Clean Water Services has finished their regional study. Um, we will need to adopt the recommendations if we want, you know, what you're asking, I believe, is to look at it from a regional, to look at things from a regional viewpoint, other than a, my, here's my tax law viewpoint. And that's, that's what their regional study does. However, we need to actually adopt the recommendations of that study.
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm, I'm hoping that's on our agenda to get.
It had been, we've been waiting and waiting and waiting for CWS to finish.
It is finished now.
The city adopting a buffer zone, but Clean Water Services, to his point, is a regional entity that establishes all those setbacks and, and stormwater regulations, so.
Yeah.
But I think, I think, aren't they ready? They've already made the, uh.
Oh, they've made, they have.
Finally finished it.
They are ready. Our master plan says we'll adopt it. But the process is more than just saying, we adopt it. We have to actually go in and say, here's what they said and, and we adopt these things.
Well, I remember when they came and did a presentation, what, has it been a year or close to it?
Yeah.
That we asked that when they finished, that they come and do a presentation to the planning commission. And so, um, Max, Ranny, I don't know who's the appropriate person. I think it's time to put that on our agenda.
Yeah, I, I, I would have brought it up sooner, but we have so many other things. I, 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 I don't want to make the other things fall apart.
Oh, no. No, no, but I'm thinking after, after the first of the year.
I think that's great.
If we could set that up for one of our meetings.
Yeah, I can, I can reach out to my colleagues over at CWS and see if they could come by.
And then make sure that city council, Ronnie, use the, use that recording because it's important information. Is there anything else that you need to tell us, Max? I'm sorry you're not feeling well.
Yeah, me too. Um, I was coughing all over Ronnie today, so hopefully he'll, uh. Uh, no, I mean, that's, that's pretty much it. It's, it's relatively straightforward. Like I said, it's just a state mandate for the urban growth boundary, but it's not definitive in the sense that all developers, regardless of whether or not they think that there's wetlands on their property or whether or not the adopted map shows wetlands on their property, they'll still have to get, uh, wetland delineations approved by the Department of State Lands, approved by Clean Water Services. Um, so it's, it's, it's kind of a formality, if anything.
Yeah. Okay. Does everybody kind of feel like you've got a handle on what's going on and what we have to do in a month?
Mm-hmm.
The tenth. Okay.
I will not be either.
Oh, well, we can't do it on the fourth because the fourth is Thanksgiving and the fourth is Christmas.
Oh, twenty-fourth on, on Wednesday, the normal day of the month.
Yeah. I, I, I think that would be totally inappropriate.
Yeah.
Okay, December tenth.
I wouldn't be there for that either.
As much as I want to see you guys on Thanksgiving. Might be tough.
No, thank you. I'll be cooking.
So Max, I got a question for you. The, uh, the phase one, uh, that one, LWI map, seems like it's pretty significant down there to the south of the town center.
Mm-hmm.
So, um, I know that area isn't planned yet, right?
That's not buildable down there.
Yeah, I was gonna ask, is, is any of that buildable or what's kind of the plan for that area?
Not really. So if you go down there, uh, you'll, well, actually, a lot of it is taken for because the town center, the southern end of the town center has twenty acres or so of, of open. because the town center, the southern end of the town center has 20 acres or so of, of open space, which is not going to be publicly accessible, and that encompasses a lot of that significant wetland just south of the town center. So it's, it's already been annexed and it's not ever going to be developed. Um, I've had conversations with folks who were trying to develop the Olmsted property, which is the one that is just north of Elsner, and, you know, without saying too much, they're disputing the fact that there are significant wetlands on their property because it makes their property inherently less valuable to developers. But there, the, the, the whole point is to, you know, partition this land off so that it can't be developed in the future. Uh, at some point, there will be development on, on the Olmsted property if the landowners do decide to sell and, and develop it, but, uh, it won't be their entire property because there is a big giant locally significant wetland located on it. And if it was developed, the, the developer would have to do some serious mitigation.
There's some opportunity for park, park area down there or just up in space?
Yeah, there is an opportunity for park area. I actually believe that the Kingston Terrace Master Plan calls that area out for a neighborhood park, if I'm not mistaken.
I think it's three quarters of an acre, which is interesting because, you know, the neighborhood parks, uh, look like they're, they're supposed to range between, I think, three and five. It shows a three, three quarters of an acre, is that right?
I don't know off the top of my head.
Okay, all right.
Max, you mentioned that the open area is not publicly accessible, yet we're planning parks.
So if I had a map to show you, um, let me share my screen again. So the town center, you guys see that?
Yeah.
The town center comes down to this parcel right here, which as you can see has the locally significant wetland on it. And I believe their stormwater facility is right here. And then they're gonna have a multi-use path that goes around the stormwater facility that's fenced off. And so all of this is going to be maintained as open field. The park, if I recall correctly, is somewhere on this property or, or planned to be somewhere on this property, which is the Olmsted property I keep referring to.
So is that space actually going to be inaccessible or could I still go sloshing around down there? It's supposed to be inaccessible, okay.
Yeah, it's supposed to be. It's also really hard to walk around down there because it's just like a marsh, you know? So unless the city decided at some point in time to build a trail or something or utilize it, then for, for the meantime, it's going to be inaccessible. Now, that isn't to say that you couldn't just go walk down there if you wanted to, I mean, it's open space in a city, but considering that it's protected wetlands, the city might want to, at some point in the future, put some restrictions on access beyond just having the, the fence that's going to be blocking it off.
What is the current park considered? What are those wetlands?
Say that again?
What is the current park considered?
Are wetlands down there, are those also considered off limits or people go back there?
Yeah, it's technically off limits, but the city just doesn't, I mean, we don't recommend that people go down there officially.
Um, when I worked with City of Eugene and, um, this whole Riparian, um, border was kind of new, um, I, I don't know whether it's City of Eugene, but I thought it was the State of Oregon. Didn't allow any kind of, um, development within the Riparian, um, setback around any significant waterway, you know, a, a wetland or, um, a waterway. And, um, you could be grandfathered in if you had like a shed, but you couldn't put anything new in there, you couldn't develop even a path. Um, is that City of Eugene or is that State of Oregon?
I think that's City of Eugene, I think they were much stricter than the state law.
Okay.
Just segue into our next discussion.
So, anyway. Okay, does everybody feel comfortable with what's happening next month, four weeks? I'm sorry you guys won't be able to join.
Well, we'll see, I, I probably won't be able to make it, but I'll do it again.
Well, as you can see, why we couldn't have it on the 4th, uh, Wednesdays. Uh, what are you doing the night before Thanksgiving?
Oh, well, I have an idea for you.
You can come help me cook.
No, no, my house needs cleaning.
Those of us who put on Thanksgiving are very busy for, and on Christmas Eve as well. Okay, anyway.
What is our next order of business?
Do we have anything else on our agenda tonight?
Mr. Parks' conversation.
Okay. Who's eating right along?
Max, thanks for the presentation.
Yes, and take care of yourself. Do you need to participate in the parks discussion?
Um, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, I could always just watch it later, but, uh, you know, I'm here to, I'm a soundboard, so.
Okay.
I've got a lot of questions that would be nice to have you around for.
All right, shoot.
All right, anybody want to say anything?
Sure, I'll start.
Okay.
So, um, we talked about, uh, creating a parks master plan.
Yeah.
And I'm wondering, and I, I wrote this down to make sure I had a complete thought, if we could identify a strategy to see if we can come up with a park plan that mirrors what a full-blown master parks plan accomplishes, using information from the KTMP, public input from the master planning process, and other surveys like the one conducted from the West Side Trail, and then draft a code amendment to reflect, reflect what the community, the planning commission and council desires. So then rather than going through a full-blown master park plan process, do you think it's possible that we could do something similar, just using what we have?
Oh, I asked Max that question. And then he started going on and on and on about what we would need in terms of information that a master planner would be able to do. Because, um, I would add in all sorts of other information that is publicly available, actually. Um, having a, having professional technical, um, uh, advice would be good because, um, you know, I'm a landscape, I, I'm a landscape architect and I'm like, I have no idea how big fields are. You know, um, in terms of having an experienced parks person, um, who has a better idea of how much space things take. But I, yeah, I don't know what our budget is in the city, we do have possibility, we just, didn't we get a grant, Max?
For what?
Um, for, um-
For technical assistance for some sort of park?
Yeah, for the West Side Trail.
Uh?
We got a grant for that.
For the West Side Trail, okay.
So, my thought about kind of what's critical importance for us is we have right now general, general little ovals of where parks are going to go and then quarter-mile, uh, circles of where they might go. But what that leaves is each development that comes in gets to say, I don't want to, I don't need to dedicate the park, there's, there's, I'm, I'm just in this quarter of the circle and we can put it over here. Um, I think, I think we kind of need to fairly, fairly quickly, you know, before we lose options.
Yeah.
Yet as, as, as I said, uh, talk, talk to new home, find out who's moving in here, find out what our demographic is, and check out where these parks are going to be, how big they're going to be and where they're going to be. And the details of the specific amenities that are going to go with them. We, we don't need right away, but we do need to lock in where they're going to be. And as I, as I look at the numbers and everything, what I see is the Metro 30, 3,300 units, uh, for the overall. And then, of course, you have each individual thing has to have a density, but it's up to us, you know, we can, we can create lots of non-net space. And it's up for us to get the entire number up to the 33. And in the current stuff, I see numbers like 30, up to 38, which is kind of an aspirational number. But what, when I see that, I go, it kind of, it looks to me like the concept there is maximize the units, put all the parks in the open space category, so that you're not using up any developable land. And so if we're going to make a decision, I mean, now, that just kind of, I think that kind of just slid in there.
Yeah, I, um, I did some research and Tigard, um, I actually looked up the open space requirements in both Tigard and Beaverton.
How different they were.
In Beaverton, um, each development had to have a percentage of their space, not including, there's a difference between an active, I'm confused, I'm not sure which one, there's a difference between an active park and open space. Open space is not allowed to be considered a park.
Right, there are also passive parks, there's active parks, there's passive.
Right, well, when they, when they, you know, it's kind of active, you can like go and have a picnic.
Carol, didn't that, didn't that example from Beaverton include backyards and front yards?
Yes, yeah, and then Beaverton had this example that say, I think it was like 15% of your space has to be, um, has to be open for active recreation. But, um, interestingly enough, um, in that calculation, you could include, um, front and backyard. And I think they did that-
So that a developer could come along and, um, have bigger lots, actually, would have the option of bigger lots. But then it's not pri, it's private and not public. So the things we need to think of is, you know, what's private, what's public? Um, if you've got an HOA, um, is it semi, am I semi-public, semi-private?
Mm-hmm. Um, who's allowed to go there? Um, so we have to think of, you know, do we want to write into the codes that all parks are public? Um, and I, I was thinking in terms of, um, the development, um, that we have just, I was thinking a percentage of space be designated for active recreation. Um, I remember the developer was very proud that he was able to squeeze in more houses than were required.
Mm-hmm.
You know, and, um, and we really do, yes, we need to have a way of, um, providing something nature for people.
The other little piece that we have to remember is Metro and the county are going to have their finger in the pie as well. And, uh-
And Tigard, because Tigard has-
And Tigard, yeah.
Planning for River Terrace 2.0.
So, uh-
One thing I would just caution the commission on at this point in time is the fact that the city doesn't have a city manager and the city staff haven't really been, sorry.
You're a member of the family.
Blows my chair. Um, uh, it's, it's, it, from a staff perspective, it's a little bit difficult to navigate the, the workplace at the moment because the city council is going in a direction, um, which seems to be more focused on King City proper, as I refer to it, you know, old, old King City. Um, everything east of 137th. And without having a city manager to discuss these options with the city council, uh, I mean, all of staff gets direction from the city manager who gets direction from the city council. And so we could come up with plans for parks at the moment, but if a city manager gets hired and the city council doesn't want to pursue it, it puts the city in a, of a pickle because we're, we're kind of going in two different directions. Um, the West Side Trail being an example of that. And so, I don't know, maybe I'm thinking out loud.
So I, 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 I understand your point, not having a city manager and the way that the, uh, hierarchy works, right? The way the chain of command works. But it's also the planning commission's role is to make recommendations to the council. So without, so it's not the council then that takes control and decides what they're going to do and then directs the city manager to then direct staff. The, the role as I see it and the way I understand it is the planning commission makes recommendations to the council and then the council then takes those recommendations and decides what they're going to do with it, right?
So with that in mind-
Am I wrong?
No, no, you're absolutely right. Um, so-
Okay.
I am presenting that resolution to the city council that was recommended by the planning commission next week. And I think it would be really beneficial for a representative from the commission to help me present that and speak on it a little bit, to give some more information to the council about what issues from the planning side of things are, are coming up and what needs to be addressed. Because I can speak in circles all day long, but having that little bit of an outside influence, I think, would be really helpful. I don't know if anyone on the commission wants to rec, uh, volunteer to speak to that.
Gretchen has to be, sounds like Mike is ready. Um, what do we have to convince the city council to do exactly?
Uh, devote, devote resources to developing or amending the code for parks. Because the city council, to be honest, is very focused on the TSP at the moment and depending on what kind of grants or, you know, what have you, that, that we can get, um, you know, it's, it's, I think they'll need a little bit of convincing, to be honest.
So are we more just kind of like notifying kind of what we're thinking about at this point? Or are we actually trying to, uh, you said convince, are we trying to sell them on something?
Well, it sounds like you're making the recommendation, right, so.
Well, I mean, we, we would like to, I mean, we're not ready to make a recommendation yet, right? So, I mean, there's a lot of work that needs to be done probably before we make a recommendation, but I think just to put it on their radar, as far as this is something that probably needs to be considered.
That's what is in the-
That's in the resolution, right?
The resolution that we recommended.
Okay.
Yeah, what, four weeks ago?
Yeah, what was, um, anyone have a copy of what that resolution is?
Yeah.
Yeah, it basically just, um, directed staff to devote resources to either code amendments for the parks for affordable housing or, um, trying to get grants.
Part of the reason, the, 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 is they're going to want to see certain processes occur in a certain order.
Oh.
And, um, that, I, I like your idea, but that cannot be sufficient for them.
Well, do we have the technical, I mean, I've, I've been a professional planner and- Well, do we have the technical, I mean, I've, I've been a professional planner and I've designed parks. So I have that in my technical bag. Um, you've surveyed, so we can find a good topograph of staff and just kind of follow the lines. And you've done a hell of a lot of research, so, that's the world.
No, I, I just, we have to realize that we don't have total control over.
So, uh, can we, can I expand on that a little bit?
Yeah.
Regarding that, so the, the K T N P has already kind of established an outline for our parks, right? In terms of acreage, range, general location, um, the neighborhood parks, you know, neighborhood parks are funded by developers and blah, 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 blah. I mean, the, the general park plan is there already. So that's why I asked, do we have to go to the step spending a couple hundred grand or waiting for a grant that gives us that opportunity to create a master parks plan? Is it really necessary, i- is what I, what I'm getting at? It would be nice to have, absolutely, but can we use what we have and expand on it and become, drill down more and become a little bit more specific on exactly what it is we want from our parks? Like we talked about amenities, right? And active versus passive. And the way I see this parks, you know, here's just, I just want to give you guys.
Yeah.
There's already developed properties or properties that have already been.
Right, yeah.
Right?
Don't park them.
They're, they're, they're. So the community park thing is important because there are large parcels. You know, we're talking anywhere from fifteen to thirty acres per community park. And I think the longer that we wait, or the more kind of generalized our plan is, there's going to be some missed opportunities, um, as development applications come through. And it's like, oh, so we're going to find ourselves like, where are we going to put that community park? And wouldn't it have been nice if we had a ball field, a baseball field, or a park that had restrooms and parking lots? And all the things that come along with a community park? When we're kind of focused on, I feel like, the parks going on the, in the badlands or in the, right, the.
But we can't build them.
The outskirts, you know, in the, you know, and not, not that there's anything wrong with having parks, you know, along the river, that's great. It's worth it for trails, right, that sort of thing. And, you know, having a linear park underneath the power lines, that's great. We're taking advantage of an area that can't be developed, where you've got sizzling power lines overhead. And that's not what I envision when I go take my kids to a park, is being under these big.
Well, except that, I hate to break it to you.
Yes.
All the way through Beaverton, that's where they have the ball fields.
Really?
And, oh, yes, all the way through Beaverton and up through unincorporated.
What person Beaverton doesn't have?
But, but, but the point I'm making is, they have been developed to all kinds of projects. And I was very disappointed when I was on the Tigerd council that I couldn't get my council to follow through on that.
So, so Matt, have you looked at the Sherwood man, Parks Master Plan?
The Sherwood one, Sherwood West?
Yeah.
Uh, I haven't seen their Parks Master Plan.
Okay, my understanding, I haven't read it yet, but my understanding, it's about sixty to eighty pages. Um, they, they developed their Master Park Plan, I think, in two thousand and six. And then they did an amendment, I think, like, uh, three years ago. And that amendment cost two hundred grand, just the amendment. That was, that wasn't, that wasn't creating it.
Yeah.
So anyway, I just, I just want to throw it out there, do you think it's possible that we can work in? And I'd be willing to devote my time and energy to working with you or staff or, you know, maybe we have a group of people that kind of, you know, helps kind of, kind of drill down and develop something that emulates, you know, a master parks by Sherwood.
So.
Yeah, I saw here, yeah.
Um, one thing that I've been wanting to bring to the council, which maybe should come to the planning commission, should, should come to the planning commission first, is an update on the SDC capital improvement projects list for parks. And so the city currently are SDCs. Uh, the town center is a little bit of an odd case because the SDCs from the Town Center for Parks are going into an escrow account to be paid back to the developer when they build the park blocks in three or five years. However, with Kensington Square, with Charlin Woods, the city should be attaining six or seven figures multiple, uh, of money to devote to parks. And so I think if we really want to pinpoint exactly where the parks are, are going to go and what we want them to be, to have as far as amenities, then it's going to be the city's bonus to go out buy the land. Ronnie can maybe chime, SDCs can be paid for acquisition, I'm not exactly sure. Um, Ronnie, do you have any thoughts?
Can you come over here where you can hear? He couldn't hear what you were saying, Max.
Ronnie, can SDCs be used for acquisition?
SDCs can be, uh.
For parks?
I believe so, but I would have to double check.
It's true.
I think, I think you can.
It talks about land acquisition, right, as part of the, the parks funding.
Yeah.
Um, and that's part of the SDC, uh, table, I think.
Okay, great.
I believe, I believe we can, but it could also be challenged.
Well, yeah.
I mean, I'm not, we're not talking about eminent domain or anything, we're just, you know, willful, willing sellers potentially wanting to, like the heralds that are over there where the community, community park number one is supposed to be.
Great, so, yeah, we could, we could use SDCs for, uh, land purchase and capital improvement. That falls under.
Okay, alright.
So this, this might be something that the city, we haven't gotten that revenue just yet. And I'd have to check with Mira to determine how much money is in that fund currently. Because there hasn't been a ton of development in the city in the last, you know, ten years, uh, other than just a few subdivisions here and there. But it, it, it's definitely something that I can look into to see how much money is actually in the SDC park fund. And then if, if, we've got the LWY, so if the things, you know, if they line up, then it, it, it might just be prudent for the city to go out and start buying some land and developing it on our own instead of just relying on developers to build it or.
At least there's some discussions, right? Yeah.
Yeah, because one of the problems we have is we can put the parks, you know, in places. And I think you were pointing out that there's a new house on one of the places we want to park on and no one's going to sell it. And I don't know if you want to put, you know, your, um, you know, ball fields on your, on your.
Well, you know, I, 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 I think it would, it would probably bear some fruit by going back and looking at some of the surveys, you know, to kind of see what people, what people want. I don't know that we necessarily need to do another survey, because there was one done for the West Side Trails. I think there were others during the, uh, master planning process. To, um, we can certainly, you know, do another survey, but, you know, it's like, how many surveys, you know?
Well, that the West Side Trail is the most recent one, and I think we had really pretty good feedback on that.
You started to say something earlier.
Oh, I was, I was just in going along with what your initial thought was. So in talking about this, because I wasn't at your last meeting, but, um, I remember the gentleman telling us, whenever you want something done, first you need to know what your goal is. So I, I'm a little fuzzy on what exactly is our goal here? And so then we can go back from there. So if our goal is to look at the, uh, concept park areas that were in the, in the, in the, in the plan and think about, well, that's kind of a good spot, maybe that, okay, how do we get that? How do we accomplish those locations and having that done there? And then back up from there. And, uh, using the existing resources is what you're, you're saying, is like, we have, we know what we want. We have potentially money that we could purchase some spots, just thanks. Again, but what is our, is our goal to match the plan and have the parks be in those particular spots? Or is it to have a larger park somewhere that has more amenities? What exactly are we looking for? And I think you're looking for some kind of open space, even a small pocket park, in every, close to every little neighborhood. So how do we reach those goals? I guess we have to decide what particular, and I don't think we need two goals, I think we need like one goal, or maybe two goals.
A mission.
And then go back from there. But there's, there's a lot of information, as Mike is saying, that is existing and available to us. How do we capture that information and make it part of our, uh, pitch to the council or to whoever else? But we have all these things already in place, we just need to build slightly on it and then we can accomplish goal one, let's say, is a couple more pocket parks. Maybe goal, uh, one is, is a one larger park or increasing something at the community park. So, you know, I guess we start there, because if we don't focus on some particular things, we're just getting diffused a little bit.
And the, and the master plan does, you know, kind of lay out a general plan, right?
Yeah.
Um, and so one thing, uh, y'all may not be aware of, and I really wasn't until I started kind of going through this stuff, is that, um, there's the Parks SDC project list. And.
SDIP.
Uh, SDIP?
Yes.
Oh, that's okay, yeah, yeah, the SDC, SDC project list. So as it relates to parks, uh, the capital cost for years twenty twenty-three to twenty forty-three. Fifty forty-three, the tier-one projects involve community park number one, but not community park number two. Um, the neighborhood parks aren't in there at all because they're paid for by developers. As we saw with Kensington Square. And now with Myrtle, there's a builder that's building a house where a neighborhood park was a green dot on the map, right? These green dots now are getting squeezed because.
They don't mean anything.
Because now that's. A quarter mile radius, now you got.
Gone.
That, a, a third of it or more is out of that circle.
Yeah, because we didn't mandate anything, nothing's mandated, so nothing's required.
So it, it seems to me like we have to come up with a more definitive concrete plan that, you know, kind of narrows down the focus and starts getting these general, general requirements of the master plan. And again, I'm just, I'm just curious, you know, can we, gets back to the same question I asked before. You know, I, I'm hopeful that we would be able to do a CDC amendment that could take care of a lot of these specific issues and take that generalness and that uncertainty out of our parks plan before it's too late.
Yeah, and especially when so much of, some of this language is, is in the material now. But as, as to Gretchen's point, if we start adding, bringing these in, being sand like, oh, well, we always wanted to have it in there, but you just didn't do it. Um, is it going to have to go to metro and to county and to state before we can even change the.
I don't think so.
Code a little bit, just to get in that mandate a little bit.
I mean, definitely ask the question.
Yeah.
I, I think that metro and everybody has already signed off on our, on our plan. And I think all the elements are there, I could be totally wrong, and Max, you would know a heck of a lot better on that, uh, point. But, uh, it seems like all of that has already been done. You know, we have our range of parks, we have the number of parks, we have general idea where they go. So it seems like everybody has already signed off on the plan, just a matter of, of, you know, bringing that quarter mile circle in and identifying.
And we make it happen.
So, um.
And the, the focus would need to be on, uh, the neighborhood and community parks, uh, the big pieces. It doesn't, the little pieces, the pocket parks, they're with the, with, with, you know, New Home created park of parks in this last Charlin Woods because it makes the development better.
Yeah.
Kensington? Didn't.
Didn't.
Um, but developers are going to develop stuff that's going to make it better. But the focus needs to be to lock in the areas for the community and the, uh, neighborhood parks.
The larger parks.
Bigger parks.
I'm going to, that becomes goal one then, that becomes goal one.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Those larger, uh, somehow. Lock in the, the larger parcels, whether we buy it from the landowner or somehow donate that if, if there's a developer that comes in that, that would require that X number of space needs to be a park. I don't know how you do that stuff, but.
Yeah, right now, right now, the SDCs pay for community parks, we can use those neighborhood parks. The developer, you know, the developer comes in and says, I want to develop this piece of land. And we say, this quarter of it needs to be a park, which leaves you this much net developable.
Right, and then the question's going to come back is, can they get their development housing stock per acre that's required for the development?
Net acre, net acre, yes.
Just net acre, yeah, that wouldn't.
Right, and the park comes out.
Well, then that's great, so, so we just need to have a figure out our goal is to find a way that we can legally designate X number of space that is going to be a park and you can't develop it.
Yeah, the, the other issue that, uh, Commissioner Petrie brings up really well is, say you designate two or three lots as park, the property owners of those lots are going to say, well, you know, what the heck, I was expecting to get a huge payout and develop my property and now you're saying I can't do that. Um, I don't know what the legality of that is, uh, but I just, that's some pushback that needs to be.
I think my understanding of that, of, on that, Max, and, um, was during the Kensington Square hearings, the lawyer stood up and it was the first time I kind of recognized, uh, maybe, um, the fact that he brought up is that if you have developable property, the price per acre remains the same, whether it's developed or it's a park. So I think as a property owner, they're not going to care one way or the other, if they're looking for the, the check. The check's going to be the same no matter what the use is, whether it's park or development. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's, I think that's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, but the developer's not going to be happy, because they're not going to be able to develop and that's.
Well, that, that would be the point.
Effectively reduce.
At that, at that point, that would be where the city comes in and, and builds the park themselves.
Yeah, my, my question is, is King City a mark? For the, I mean, did they choose to come to King City because they do, they didn't have to? They could just squeeze all the houses in there.
No, because it's happening everywhere. It's a state requirement, so, you know, it's not, it's not.
And, and the current, you know, the last legislative section made it even worse.
Oh, that's good.
Yes.
Alright.
Well, I think the city could be considered a mark depending on how we, uh, we handle the situation, right?
Yeah, we, we roll over and.
If we roll over, then they are a mark, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, right now, the plan, uh, would, would, would say, or tell people that, no, we're not a mark because we have, we've made, uh, you know, provisions for these things to happen.
This is our goal, to provide this to our, to the city of King City and for the people that are coming in to the city that we are, that these things are important to us, which is part of our description.
Right, but, but, wait, just one sec, guys. There's a bit of, of gun, being gun shy. Um, we worked on, all this work to work on the trail.
Yeah.
And the blowback from that was so intense. I mean, fine, we aren't going to deal with it anymore. And, uh, so there's some justifiable reticence upon staff.
There were reasons for that and, and it's, again, it's attached, it's attached to existing, so what's that about?
It's, but, but the point I'm making is it really blew up and it's a problem. No, Ronnie, that's the fact, that really is the fact.
Related to the road issue, right?
It was the road and then there was too much, anyone's face.
Well. Well, it was just a suggested plan.
Yeah, it was all suggested.
And, and, and just the same point. It may, it may not happen in the future, right? It just, I think that, uh, the, all the consternation and pressures and everything on the road and that connection blew that.
But that's going to happen eventually, that road is going to get connected.
I, I, I disagree that it will necessarily happen.
You mean, get a.
We, we specifically added roads that weren't flooded and then when we made the approval, we made a statement to Edgewater.
we made a statement to Edgewater, here's our plan, it requires us to acquire your land. We will acquire your land even though you're telling us.
No, that's not what it, no, that's not what it said. It said, if.
We can't build the park without acquiring.
Cannot build the park if we can't put those stubs in and they were not on Edgewater, they were above Edgewater. So, no, that's not accurate.
Well, the roads are in.
Some of them are, but not all of them.
Capulet, Capulet and Fisher.
But the point is.
Three.
But the point is, especially with the folks who came with their plan to the council was to build through the St. John Thirty-Seventh. Someday, that's gonna happen. But if they don't want the park there, fine, roads won't get built. City cannot afford to pay to build those roads just on their own. We don't have that kind of money, we just don't.
I, 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 um.
So essentially, park is not gonna get built, period, end of story.
In, in my mind, it would.
Well, alternative B could be built, a West Side Trail could be built, never touching Edgewater property. If, if.
But it won't, but it will not go all the, it has to go through Edgewater property if you're gonna have the trail.
The alignment.
Pressure from Metro.
Backwood, say something.
The whole thing?
No, just a portion.
Okay, yeah.
The alignment of the trail, Dean, was designed in a way to avoid wetlands that are in the West Side Trail. That's why it abuts and goes through the, the Edgewater property and the DLJ property. I went back after, um, Mike left and I approached Edgewater and said, hey, can we still do this and just build the trail and nothing else? I just wanted the trail, because I think it would be great and, you know, have like a manicured lawn and the twelve-foot path. And I, I, I caught some flack from a number of folks up there. Maybe because of bad blood between the city and the HOA or perceived, you know, misdirection or whatever, what have you. But, um, I think just to speak to Gretchen's point about being a little gun shy, it was a little bit of a, I, I, in my mind, I felt like it was a great middle ground and then I, um, you know, kinda got shoved on my heels a little bit.
Well, Matt, um, the, the West Side Trail's been.
Nothing else, that's the trail, I just wanted to build the trail.
Right, over twenty years. And the people up on Bull Mountain are the original, um, not in my backyard. Oh my God, it's gonna bring people in who don't belong here, my.
Crime.
Danger, I mean, the same reason why, like, as we go, streetcar didn't get, I mean, there's so much.
Nibism.
Crap.
Anyway, I'm glad, I'm glad.
Sorry.
Beam that up.
Anyway, sorry, I, it, it hit me hard since I hadn't done a tremendous amount of work.
Good that was.
Maybe that could be another thing that the Planning Commission could readdress is presenting or voting on a recommendation for a concept, a preliminary concept that just shows the path. And.
I'd love to do that.
At that point in time, it would.
But I, but I think the best, the best way to do that is through collaboration with the HOA.
You know, I try.
Yeah, but, you know, uh, you, you, you're, you're a representative of the big bad city, maybe.
Yeah, I know.
There's, there's.
So all of, so are all of us.
Matt, this, what I see happening is a good thing. Back, back at the time we did this, and you'll see it when we only had four people that allowed wetland people onto their property, I was one of them.
Yes.
There was zero trust outside of the King City boundaries or within Edgewater for King City.
Oh, I know, Dean, I went out there, I knocked door to door, I talked to Carla Banks.
I have seen, I have seen trust being rebuilt. I think, I think we are moving completely in the right direction and, and rebuilding trust that was, that was non-existent.
I'm surprised I didn't get a.
Or, and, and I, and I don't think it's impossible to go back and, and say, this isn't the way it used to be. As, as, as things first started to change, I would get outside views that, Max, you were, you were part of the, part of the situation. That has, that's changing, that's, that's being rebuilt.
Max wasn't even here when this was going on. He came on at the.
There wasn't trust and it's being rebuilt.
I, I appreciate that. I appreciate that sentiment, Dean. I'm, I'm doing the best I can, you know, I, I wanna, I wanna do things that people like.
Been reflected.
It's not, it's not, Max.
I know.
It's a lot of nibism, a lot of it.
Oh, I'm sorry, a lot of.
Ambiism.
Not in my backyard.
Not in my backyard. And there are a lot of people who don't wanna see roads, I understand that, but unfortunately, Almighty State of Oregon and Metro has shoved this down our throats. I am not happy with.
Gretchen, we're more, we're more talking about just like, um, good faith efforts by the city, I think. And that could have been communication.
Well, we had good faith efforts, we were trying.
Yeah.
When you were off the mark of the park.
Well, all right, all right.
Back to park.
I'm, I'm kind of.
It is the park, but, you know, I, I know some, there were some people in Edgewater that were really excited to see all that parking.
Yeah, really.
We had all that parking, that wonderful parking along there that are, really, that's all parking and we could park there? Yes, you could park there.
Just as a, a little anecdote for you guys.
Okay.
We went out, myself, Mike, uh, city engineer, Vajans, and our acquisition contractor that, that the West Side Trail technical grant afforded us. And within thirty minutes, we were staking out some of the land that the Edgewater owns so that we could, you know, survey it and know exactly where it was. And we talked to one, uh, property owner who understandably was upset because his house is like right on where one of the connections would be, the road connections. And he gave us an earful. And then we walked up the, the, that alley, I don't know if it even has a name, but the alley back there. And, um, within twenty minutes, we saw another property owner and a, a father. And he was like, hey, I've been seeing all this stuff about you guys building a trail or something, like, man, I would really love to just bomb down that thing with my son on a bike, like, that sounds awesome. And so it's definitely a mixed bag and there has to be a way to, I, I mean, you're never gonna appease everyone, but there has to be a way to like find a middle ground where, where people can get excited about things that the city is, is doing again.
Well, what was, I'll tell you what was really disappointing to me at that process. There was a citywide mailer, you know, those, went out saying, hey, we're gonna have a meeting and look at some ideas about what people would like, possibly for a park down there, over there. And not one person from the Edgewater area attended. People from Rivermead attended, there were half a dozen people from Old King City. And I was really disappointed that night that we didn't get more people to come and.
You talking about the one at the school?
At the school.
Oh, I was there.
No, I didn't, no.
I, and you were one of the half a dozen people from, anyway, the point I'm making is the city did an outreach and asked people to come and we, I was really disappointed how few people came.
That was one of the reasons why we did pop-ups at the park and we went to the elementary school.
Pardon? I'm sorry, two people were talking at one.
Sorry, go ahead.
It's both.
If you're on, if you're on their email list, you can, you'll get notified and then they mail out mailers, they can figure out.
They're required to do physical, hard copy mailing.
And he does that, they do next door too, they do next.
Yeah, yeah, but that's.
The good thing to tell us, we have, King City's got a P O Y.
Yeah.
She seems to be very good.
Yeah, yeah. Well, that's.
Outreach that needs to be done, I think it's gonna be light years better than it was before.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Meyer.
Let's get back to the park.
I think we probably could have, uh, gone door to door to, to, to be more of a face as opposed to just having a few events, you know, lessons learned. Um, again, if I do that or if poor Erin Carey, our P I O does that, she might have to deal with some pushback. But, um, I think the city needs to have a little bit more transparency and, and, um.
Well, that's, that's part of, part of the problem is the lack, we are a tiny town and we didn't have a public information officer. And, you know, we didn't have anybody on planning until we had Max. And this is one of the issues, if you're tiny, tiny, you don't have the staff to do all of the stuff you'd like to do. And I'm, you know, it's better now, but it's, it's a fact of life.
What's most things is, you know, things are calming down, things are calming down. This is something that I think, and there's gonna be turnover of people and people are moving in and out of Edgewater and those things. They were complaining that they weren't, you didn't spoon feed them the information, but, um, but, you know, sometimes you have to take your own initiative, you have to show up to a meeting, we can't just, you know, drag you to a meeting. But the, my point was that it can be revisited. And especially if the, if the, uh, if Beaverton really gets, brings theirs down and starts coming so that we're like the piece that's missing, then there's gonna be pressure.
Yeah, and the pressure is now.
Just as a word of caution to all of us, I think we all would need to be very careful in how we phrase things. Um, because we're talking about our fellow citizens and stuff and, and it, it, it's an easy phrase, they were complaining because we didn't spoon feed them the information.
Well, that's so.
I don't think, I'll bet you no one ever said, complained, that phrase.
Probably not.
Right, right, so, so we should all be careful.
Yeah, that was, that was me.
I'm done, I'm done.
I would love.
You need to go down that path, I understand.
Can we get back to.
I'm, I'm gonna make a comment, I think Mike has a great idea. The problem is, I'm not sure that we are gonna be able to do enough. I think it's great, those of you who have time to work on that, I think it's great. But I can tell you right now, Metro's not gonna like it, Washington County's not gonna, definitely.
Why is it not gonna like?
They want the consultants' reports. They want direct consultant reports. No, they don't.
Is that so with you?
No.
They're the K C M P, right?
That is the thirty thousand foot level.
Here's my question, okay, we've got this.
Yeah, yeah.
This, and we say, we're saying and seeing that it's not specific enough. How much detail can we add to this without having to redo this? If we can make changes and get certain things in the comp plan that agree with this, we don't have to revise this.
Right, it's wanting to, we're wanting to make it live and we're wanting to make it.
We, we want to be able to implement this and as long as we're not making changes that changes the comp plan, then why would we have to do anything more than.
So. Putting in the. Here's an example of that, right? My understanding, the D L C D, when it comes to parks, let's say we change parks. Say we eliminated a park, recreated another park. What D L C D is concerned about is the number of trips, that affects the number of trips. If you keep two parks and they're the same size, then they don't, they're not worried about it because the trips should be the same. Trouble is when you, when you make a radical change, like you remove something or you add something and enlarge, then the trips change. And so then they're concerned about the traffic, right, the study and the, the internal network. Again, that's just my understanding.
We are gonna have to do a transportation study, that is an absolute given with parks because people are gonna wanna have access to those parks.
What I may.
I'm honored if we showed the.
Don't do anything.
No, 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 I, what, what we need to do unfortunately, from my perspective, is we need to do the right thing, which is we have to at least get some consultant report over and above what was done how many years ago now, once it's.
Five.
Is it five?
About five years.
Yeah.
Even if we do nothing, we have to do, we have to do more reports, if we do nothing to this.
Commissioner Mitchell, if I may, um.
Yes, go ahead.
I think this goes back to what I mentioned earlier, the fact that, and what, uh, Mike mentioned is that community park number one is right there on the C I P, right? And so the city needs to go and be proactive. If the city wants to build parks, the city needs to devote the resources, the S D Cs, to going and build the parks. And, uh, I mean, if I'm, I'll hold my tongue, but it, it feels like we're a little bit of a rudderless ship at the moment. And I think part of that is the fact that there is no city manager who is able to consolidate all of the priorities from the city council. And so if the Planning Commission wants to, say, devote all the resources that the S D Cs are bringing in to community park one or community park two or et cetera, then maybe that could be another resolution. But I don't wanna just keep spinning resolutions because that also just feels like you're spinning the wheels. Um, there. I think that the commission should take a look at the C I P list, find the priorities and devote and, and, you know, ultimately get council to direct staff to commit to those priorities. The issue with Kensington Square was the fact that city doesn't have any mandates for pocket parks or otherwise green space. And so if there's maybe a.
That's the thing we could do.
I, I could, I could redline the, the city community development code and just, you know, have five percent of every development be required to build a public green space.
Is that something we could do immediately?
By D L C D and also the fact that with doing that, I, we would also have to, um, increase our staff or increase our commitment to parks maintenance because we currently don't have a public works, a parks and rec department. We're, we're, we're running a skeleton crew right now, there's like six of us at the entire city level, operating the entire city. And so it's, it's a, it's a tricky situation. Um, but I think that could be maybe a short-term solution. And if no one objects to it, I mean, no one from outside agencies, then that might at least ensure that the city is providing enough, enough green space.
And that we could do ourselves.
Yes.
And that we could do ourselves, we, we would still have to notify everyone and it would still go through a Papa and, and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Um.
But we wouldn't have to go out and get a lot of help.
Yeah, if any agency has objection to it, they'll raise their objection at the hearings.
Yeah.
So I think.
Max, wait.
Sorry, go ahead, Mike.
Uh, I'm sorry, I interrupted you.
Oh, no, I'm just, just. I think that would be, I think that, I think that's. Based off of our conversations over the last few months about this, I think that sounds like the solution in the short term. And then once the city gets enough resources, really identify projects that the city wants to invest in, whether it's the West Side Trail, whether it's community park number one, um, you know, what, what trail, the, the, the Tuolton River Trail, um, but that's probably a little less unlikely or a little more unlikely because involving all of the land acquisition for that. But, um, that, it, it, putting the. that, eh, eh, putting the onus on the developer, which was a lesson that we learned when we did Kensington Square, to say, hey, give up two lots, you'll still be over your minimum density and build a park. Um, and we point that, to that in the code. And that would ensure that we don't just have endless sprawl, which I feel as if that's sort of the main concern of the commission.
Good idea.
Yeah.
Um,
Good idea.
You mentioned of having a planning commission establish priority, right?
Yeah.
And I think I, I think, I think I mentioned this at the last meeting. You two are gardeners and
Yeah.
and landscapers, right?
Mm-hmm.
So you, you plant your, your anchor plants first when you're doing a landscape, right? You plant your big tree, you plant your, you're putting your, you know, where your water feature's gonna go and then, and then you build on that. Right? I kind of feel like, um, a priority then, and as we discussed, would, would be to identify those community parks are going. And I, I think we know where one of them is going. Pretty confident, right? Uh, that south west corner of where, uh, Charlin Woods is, kind of that area.
Just going down here.
Yeah, okay, that one.
So, so planting that other one, uh, I think is something that, um, should be kind of on the short, short-term list. Um, as far as, you know, identifying amenities and, uh, possible locations, so. Uh, and then determining, like you said, maybe making some amendments to the C D C or the
Um, I have a question. Ronnie's still here, okay. Um, like, it's really hard that I can't talk to anybody about any of this, you know, if we're not in a meeting. How much, um, information do you want, Max, when we find something? I mean, you're gonna be the arbiter of all of our thoughts because we can't talk to anybody else. Is that okay?
All the information you have for me, I, I suppose. I mean, I am sort of the liaison between the Planning Commission and the city council. And
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm really looking forward to when we get a new city manager because they're gonna have a lot to be filled in on. And, um, yeah, I, you know, it's, it's a lot of information to hold without really having direction from above me at the moment necessarily. I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know if that's a cop-out or, or what, but it just feels like, um, eh, everything's kind of on pause at the moment. Um, but I, I, I have been, and I've talked to Ronnie about it, looking at the C I P list and it's, I think it's it's supposed to be revised every two years and it was adopted in twenty twenty-three. So it's overdue for revision. Um, even if nothing necessarily changes. And I think once you get it on the C I P list, then it's like, okay, this is what the city is recognizing as areas of need and, and, and necessary dedication for resources, so, um.
But, but isn't the C I P, isn't the C I P list already established?
It is, but it's supposed to be revised every two years.
Take a look at it in a couple of years. Okay, well, let me see if I've heard. I think we have a consensus to maybe focus on the pocket park issue to start with. Did I hear that?
Nope.
Not, heads nodding?
True, true.
Not, not a main focus, but an easy solution.
Well, to start
If we can
Yeah.
Through the, through the code, yeah.
Um, all right. Well, um, Max, do we need to write something up specifically about that?
Yeah, well, what I would do
Over and above our current
Since it's a since it'll be a code amendment, it has to be a Papa, so it won't be heard in December because there needs to be a thirty-five day notice prior to the first hearing. But in January, we can convene and pass a recommendation for a resolution. We can go over the red line if you, if you wanna have a workshop beforehand, so we could talk about it um, before, before you vote on it.
Okay.
But I, I, I think that'll be the timeline and then, uh, going back to what Mike said is then we can actually start either working on the city being proactive to build the parks in the specific spots that they're designated, which as has been discussed, some of them are probably unfeasible.
Already gone.
Um, but I, I, I think that might be the, the, the short-term solution and the long-term vision.
Okay.
Max, I have a question. Uh, the S D C funds for parks uh, cover capital improvements. Is that right?
That's correct.
Okay. Where in the plan do we address maintenance of the parks?
Yeah, S D Cs don't cover maintenance.
That's what I understand. So, one of the resolutions that was passed by the city council back in twenty twenty-three said that in order to minimize potential increased cost to King City residents, uh, they came up with a capital plan, but there's no plan to address ongoing maintenance. So when we build it, somebody's gonna have to maintain it. And if you don't maintain it, uh, it'll fall in disrepair and it's not good for the city. And I'm concerned over the, you know, if we, if we build it, we've gotta have funds to maintain it. And people need to know that that's gonna cost money.
Right.
And that's what he was talking about, the lack of a public works department.
Well, funding public works department is funding, funding required to maintain it. Right now, if you go down to the existing King City Park and you look at the tennis court and the basketball court, it's literally cracking and falling apart. Now, Max mentioned the means that, what, you, sometime ago, you had a hundred thousand dollars just to fix it? And there's no funds.
That's what Dave said for the tennis court, because it needs to be completely resurfaced.
Just for the tennis court?
Yeah.
Okay, and so if we do nothing, we're faced with more and more and more disrepair. And pretty soon that park's not gonna be used.
And that playground is falling apart, if you've looked at it. Um, we re, uh, applied
But my point, my point is
For a three hundred thousand dollar grant.
We're, we're
Yeah.
We're looking ahead to build community parks and I am concerned that we need to also make make provisions on how we're gonna fund maintenance of those parks in the long term.
Yeah, I, I think
Look what happened with Portland, they had because they weren't responsible with the finances, they didn't budget for it, and they ended up in the hole. And they had to pass a big
Huge levy.
Huge levy to bring the, same thing's happened in the state with the transportation system. And we're liable to end up in the same place if we build all these parks and don't adequately fund them.
That's my concern as well.
And come up with a way to fund them. Uh, just a comment. I don't know how to solve that.
Kind of Google, how to fund parks.
But it's, it's nice to plan to build capital things, but you've got to
Able to do maintenance.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It seemed like city's getting into a situation of raw Peter to pay Paul. Because there's a, you know, a fund that's supposed to do this and this one's lacking, so they're gonna, right? So it would, it would seem, you know, uh, the city with all the new building and new income and property tax revenue coming in to, uh, have some sound fiscal.
Oh, they're very
Responsibility in having funds for maintenance.
There are very strict rules of whether money that's in capital improvement cannot be used for
Road maintenance for
So you guys are aware, staff, um, we're, we're talking about and stuff like that to make it a little bit
Clear.
Clear um, stuff like that.
Clear baskets of money that goes in.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Um, so we're working on that. I, I have no idea on the timeline on that right now. Yeah, we're working on it.
Okay, so if we've got this idea for the pocket parks, is that something when you're feeling a little better, Max, you can kind of massage?
Yeah, I, 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 I think it would be, I mean, in practice, it would be relatively easy to amend in actual you know, we'll see, we'll see if anyone has any objections to it.
Okay.
I think that the discrepancy in the city community development code with the thirty-eight hundred versus the thirty-three hundred is important to address. Um, the other thing is, it's, it's, it's tough for staff to do these, go through this whole process for code amendments when there's so much that needs to be changed. I mean, Ronnie and I
Yeah.
pages and pages of red lines and in a perfect world, we would be able to go in and, and do like a full overhaul. But I think in the meantime, um, I can't remember the math. I don't know if it was like four percent, three percent. But, uh, seven point one eight acres, if you're looking at, again, don't quote me on the math, but three or four percent was like an acre or, no, not that. But it wa, it was like enough for a pocket park with the size of a pocket park, which is a half acre, quarter acre, what have you. So we could, we could try to at least mandate some sort of w, w, ratio that would allow and require parks to be built until the city can determine whether or not, you know, we wanna prioritize these bigger parks. Uh, I do definitely wanna recognize the concern about these just being abandoned or put into a pigeonhole where they're not supposed to be or they're, you know, not made. And as you guys know, I, I, I've expressed this concern from the beginning. But I think in the, in the short term, this is a conversation that is ongoing and then that code amendment might help the city alleviate some of the concerns about just not having any, any small parks whatsoever.
Okay.
And if you're giving me the directive, then I can certainly bring something to the commission for you all to discuss.
Is that the consensus of the group? Cause we can't do formal motions in a workshop.
Consensus, yeah.
And the consensus is, could you state it clearly? Sorry. The consensus to do what?
To have Max work on the pocket parks.
Work on coding, code for the pocket park.
Redlining the existing code, community development code to require pocket parks, pocket pots.
That's okay.
One of those words.
Something like that.
But, but with the intention that we will address the community parks and
Yes.
and reevaluate the C I P or the voting process.
Thank you for that little piece. You know, pocket parks, you know, to me are, are not a priority, but it's something that needs to be addressed and
Yes.
probably easily be done.
Yes.
You know, I kinda see, uh, these pocket parks around. I never see anybody in them.
I don't either.
You know, and, uh, not only are they not in them, but you gotta maintain them.
Yeah.
You know, kinda like, they're kinda nice to have. If I lived in an, ever in a pocket park next to me, I'd go, oh, that's kinda nice. Kind of extension of my yard, kinda, you know?
Yeah.
A nice little green space.
Not only do you have them and you can't maintain them, but there's a sign on them that says, I'm not an Old King City resident, I can't go on them, so I get mad.
What? And, and, but, you know, you haven't seen they aren't open to the public? Okay, um, I have a question for you, um, Gretchen. Um, is there any chance that, I mean, King City's a small entity and can't provide everything for everybody because, you know, it's like everything for the few. Can there be any kind of cooperation with the surrounding areas and like the Tuolotin Valley Park area or something?
No, that's not gonna happen. There's, there's a hu, long history there.
Okay, all right.
The city of Tigard bought all the property immediately across, um, Roy Rogers.
Yeah.
And they're gonna build a huge regional park there. It has access down to the Tuolotin River. Um, I was on the council when that was happening X years ago. But that's, I mean, that is one piece of the outfit.
Okay.
That's some, uh, when it's going to get built, I think they're gonna wait until most of, of river terrace two
Uh-huh.
is developed, but that's, that is in their cyber school and play.
Okay.
And if, if everybody is ready, I think we will return this meeting. Um, but I would ask people to sit here for one minute after we get off the record. Can you turn off the tape, please? The meeting is over.
I do want to point out that I lived in a very urban area when I was a kid and the pocket park that was by my house was where I spent all my time. But I also grew up in Las Vegas, which is
Oh, I'm sorry, I missed that. You're, you're advocating for pocket parks?
I'm advocating for pocket parks.
Okay.
Yeah. I grew up at your pocket park, Pat, because ours tends to have nothing.
Had marijuana and, uh,
Well, I tell you, I grew up in Chicago and the pocket park was the, was the
parking lot of the, um, girl's school. We had no but our parents didn't have to go with us. We could just go as a bunch of kids. With the bus to kindergarten, the city bus to kindergarten.
You guys are very lucky to live in Oregon. If they didn't blot in Oregon, would be a beautiful park in Las Vegas.
Well, you know, I think, I think, I think they're not used because of the sign, actually. Like, there's that one on the corner, um,
On a hundred and thirty-first. And
Are we adjourned?
Yes, I need to have phone numbers for each one of you, cause I don't have phone numbers for most of you. Do what's best for kind.